July 7, 2025, meeting of the Radnor Planning Commission. We'll begin the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, the first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 2, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. Copy of the minutes was distributed to the commissioners in advance of the meeting today. Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the minutes? Okay. With that, I will move to approve the minutes of June 2, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous? The next item on the agenda is the consideration of Appeal Number 3230 for 126 Garrett Avenue. The agenda states that the applicant wishes to construct a building on the rear of his premises where he intends to perform specialized training to prospective rowers for crew teams. Of the materials that I believe were submitted to the commissioners, they only included two aerial shots and a one-page plan of what's being proposed. I do have now more paper that actually has the zoning hearing board application. And, okay, I guess I'll let Mr. Caneo fill us in on the details.
Nick Caneo, representing the applicant on this matter. This is a matter that will go before the zoning hearing board. It's in the Garrett Hill district. So it's in that special district in Garrett Hill. And just for... You can see on what's been marked as A3, this is the aerial. And here's Conestoga Road. And we're talking about Garrett Avenue here, Conestoga Road here, the main intersection, Conestoga and Garrett, going up a little bit, up to Garrett, and the property is here. The Lesleys actually own two adjacent properties located on Garrett. They own the subject property, which is here, the one to the right, and they own the property to the left as well. The property to the right, where the proposed building would be constructed, the buildings in the front are currently some residential and some offices, which is permitted in the Garrett Hill district. And then in the rear is where the proposed building would be constructed, 1,200 square-foot building. These two sheds are planned to be removed. They meet the parking requirement, they meet all the setback requirements. What we need relief for is the use, because they're saying the use is not really a personal service. And I'll let Kevin describe what his use is going to be. That is more like an indoor recreation, which when you're here, it will not be. So we need relief on that. And then we also need relief in the Garrett Hill zoning code. It states that you can only have one principal use. So in this case, the question would be, what is the principal use? So in the abundance of caution, we also ask for relief to say that basically we have two principal uses, one being the facility and the other one being the residential uses that are in the front.
So with the uses and the building that's currently on the property, is it accurate that's a combination use already, that it's both residential and office?
That is accurate.
Okay. In the code, an understanding of how many uses you have going on, does it go building by building?
That... Good question.
Like right now, how many uses do you have on the property? One or two?
We have a mixed use, the office and the residential use, and this would be the third use on the property.
Okay. And the code allows you to have one use?
One use. And so I believe the first building, so there is a principal use in that first building because you're allowed to have offices and residential. So, you know, I assume the principal use is the residential. You know, I guess it could be the office as well, but really, there's more residential use there than the office use. Kevin's dad, who has a plumbing supply business, has an office there. That's really, you know, what the front building is, is a small office there that he uses.
Let me just ask, how many floors is the current building?
One.
Oh, it's not...
Oh, the current, I'm sorry. The proposed building's one floor. The current building is two stories, I believe, a small third floor, a small third floor area.
And how many apartments or residences are in that building?
Yeah, I have my notes on that, but Kevin, might come on up. This is Kevin Leslie, who'd be running the facility.
Just be one. Orders one apartment and one small office unit in the front of the building.
And how many people live in the one unit?
It's two bedrooms, but I believe one occupant.
And how many offices are in the building?
Just one.
Just one?
1,200 square foot, small office space.
And how many cars are typically being parked on this property right now?
The office spaces was actually, is about to be vacant, but they would typically have one, and then the apartment unit would have one.
And just going to your new building, can you talk about what you're planning to do in that building? How big it's going to be? What's going to be in it? What's the use going to be? How many people are going to be drawn for the activity being conducted in that building?
Yeah, so it's, our original plan was 1,200 square feet, essentially, you know, just a one-story pole barn, steel-engineered building of sorts that, for my business, it houses specialized coaching for rowers, high school rowers, who want to go off and row at the college level. So college preparation is one piece. The other piece is individualized coaching to better prep them for that. And essentially, the primary business operations is one-to-one coaching. So, you know, typically, one, at this current stage, it's one athlete in the building for the coaching side of things, and then college planning and college preparation, which is mostly virtual, remote.
Okay. And how many rowing machines would you have in there?
So small group, I mean, I guess it's variable, but small group essentially, you know, I've had anywhere from three to six to eight athletes in there. Probably average is probably six, but that's the secondary use, is learn-to-row opportunities and things like that to help promote the sport, build the sport. But the, for the most part, it's, for primary use, one to two.
Okay. And how many parking spaces are you looking at having?
We were, through our plan, we were, I believe, we have 13 spaces. That was the requirement that was set out for us originally, so 13 spaces. For all occupants. So I think we are, current existing building, I think we needed four, and then we had to add on another nine, I believe.
Okay. And do you think that's going to be sufficient for all of these activities, residential office and, you know, the ancillary activity in the back?
Yes, yeah. For the most part, the business use for my coaching and the work that I do with the athletes, it's going to be primarily just the, you know, one to two athletes in there. But then there will be opportunities where it's, you know, maybe six to eight, but I think max capacity, it's never going to, or it shouldn't go over that parking limit.
Okay. Have you spoken to the residents in the area?
So just the, well, we own the two adjacent properties, but other than that, not directly, no. Just the mailing that we put out earlier this week.
And did anyone respond, or have you heard back from anyone?
Not at this stage.
Okay. Let me just ask, Nick, is, from a legal standpoint, do you think you meet the standard to get a variance?
That's where we would have to obviously go to the zoning hearing board and determine that. One of the arguments is going to be, this is very similar to a personal service shop, because it's really specialized what he's offering here. This is not really an indoor recreation-type facility where people just show up at a gym and workout. This is actual instruction for rowing. Kevin wrote at St. Joe's, and, you know, and he has a passion for it, and that's where all this started. So it's really individual instruction. So, you know, I kind of said to Kevin Kachansky, I said, "Kevin, this is really personal, you know, to everyone," but of course, he still said, "Go to the zoning hearing board," you know, to try to... But I think we can fit it in. You know, obviously, we know to get a hardship for a use variance is sometimes difficult.
Yeah. I have a couple other questions, and want to hit staff, but turn it over to my colleague.
So, I mean, I have a couple, I'm just trying to figure this all out. So... Currently, this is probably for Mr. Leslie. So I thought that I saw some type of sign that talked about a locksmith, but I definitely saw plumbing trucks there. And so you're saying it's one office, one business? Was the locksmith sign, did I make that up or not?
If I'm not mistaken, the current office space that just became vacant was a locksmith. So I think that's maybe where you saw it. But there, I think, it's currently vacant in the office space.
So the current, so the office space is currently vacant, you're saying?
Or will be vacant. I think it's either August is when they're vacant, or it's currently vacant.
Because I also saw a minimum of two plumbing vans.
Those are...
And you're saying that there's only one space allotted for the plumbing, for the office space? But I saw two plumbing vans when I was there.
So the two plumbing vehicles, so my dad, who's sitting in the back there, he owns Bryn Mawr Plumbing and Heating, which primarily, or the office space for them, and the plumbing business has ran off Summit Grove Ave. in Bryn Mawr, and extra trucks that are currently inactive, he parks there.
Are those trucks going to remain there if you open your business?
No. No, they will not. He will either park them at the current space, Summit Grove, or find, or, you know, have to move them to the adjacent property, 130 Garrett Ave.
And then the last, you said you own the two adjacent properties. Does that mean you own the one, both on the, I'm going to say, the north side and the south side?
One on this side, right? Yeah. Two adjacent, yeah. One here, one there. Yeah. One on this side. Yeah, right.
So do any of the other commissioners have any questions at the moment? Okay. So, go on.
Yeah, before you, sorry. The, so it's two properties that are adjacent, not two additional adjacent properties. Okay. Sorry. And the second property, is that straight residence?
This property here. Here, here's the, or the subject property, and here's the other property. Go ahead.
So the other property is, we have residential units in this front building here, and then the back is really just separate use right now with parking trucks and, but currently, yeah, so the only, for the building itself, it's only the residential.
Is that a rental unit?
Yes.
As well? And is it multiple units or one?
Two units.
Okay. And then, although you don't own it, the house on the other side, is that a residential? Is that a business as well?
Is that De La Rettis?
It's owned the same way.
Is that De La Rettis? The one next to you?
De La Rettis?
Come on.
No, I meant going the immediate, to the property you're looking to develop. What is immediately next to that?
On the other side, here.
Yeah, this is a rental. Yeah. Is it owned the same way? Yes. Yep. That's a rental.
And it's owned by this party up in front of us, correct?
Yes.
And what do you envision the hours of this business?
So typically, around school hours. So 90% of my clientele is high school athletes, Radner, Archbishop Carroll, Agnes Irwin, and probably most surrounding high schools within the Philadelphia area. And typical around school hours, so I would say seven to nine, although that's rare with high school kids, but the majority is probably 3:30 to 6:30 p.m. And then weekends, Saturday mornings, and potentially Sundays, even though personally, my personal schedule isn't usually at this current stage with that, so. But general outside school hours, summertime, and it's also seasonal for the most part, with summertime being the largest, busiest time. And then spring and fall being way less hours of operation.
With Exhibit A3, can you just walk me through exactly? I'm sorry, Nick, the other?
The other one, yeah.
That photograph? No, 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 no. That photograph.
This one?
The one in the upper right-hand corner of the frame of what was...
This one?
That one.
Yeah.
Yep. Can you just walk me through exactly which buildings you intend to knock down? So you have the one that's basically highlighted, yep, in that frame. Which one, what will you be doing there?
These in the back. There's two smaller buildings in the back.
All right. And then you will, so will you be combining the two lots?
No. It'd be one lot. Here's where the building would be. There's two buildings are in this area now, so it'd be in the, right here, one story, 1,200 square foot in the rear.
And the parking will be, so can you remove the site plan? And the parking itself for the 13 lot, the 13 parking spaces will be all on?
All onsite.
All onsite, okay. All right. Got it. All right. So one concern that I have is the amount of impervious that you're now going to be taking up. Mr. Norrisini, can you chime in with any thoughts on that?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that, as a condition of your, so please the board recommendation of approval, that the applicant comply with the stormwater management ordinance for any new impervious on the site, which has to do with the grading permit anyways, Nick.
And they would have, it's over 1,000, I believe you said 1,200, so.
So we need full regular stormwater management.
What's on the other side of the property? So on the back, on the rear side, how far back is, I'm assuming that's residential?
Yes, the rear adjacent lots are residential.
How far back is that from your proposed building that where you're going to be holding the workouts?
So if the proposed building is at the rear lot, I don't have an exact measurement, but I'd say it's probably the equivalent of these lots. They are pretty deep, but they're not, they're not right up against the fence line, if that's what you're, so it's a little bit spaced out. They are a little bit closer or longer lots. Actually, that might be.
With the building you're looking to put on the property, is it turned so that it's not square-facing with the front of the property?
Yes, on the site plan, it's turned. I think that was mostly to align with the setback requirements in the rear, because the property line is actually on a slope. So aesthetically, or anything like that, I guess, you know, it's not technically squared off, but I think it aligns with the property line. It's a little bit of a sloped property line, you know, where one side's shorter than the other.
I'm not sure about, you know, aesthetics. It just, on the plan, to me, it looked kind of strange to have it, okay, you agree. Is it possible to square it back up?
I believe so. We would just, it would be more a matter, like, we had an architect design that particular site plan, but I believe in just, if it doesn't adhere, or it doesn't obstruct any parking spaces, then I think when we do an actual plan, then it will be, we could get squared up.
It looks like it'd be able to square it off. It doesn't seem like it would violate setbacks, but...
Yeah. Have you looked at doing stormwater? Do you have any idea what that would entail?
They have been advised.
Tonight or previous?
No, previously.
Previous? Okay.
They've been advised that they would have to do stormwater.
And do you have any sense at the moment how, what that might involve?
Yeah, I do not.
Okay. But it's not a shock?
It's not, yeah, it's...
Understood.
It's not a small amount of money, which, probably not, I would guess. Steve would, there's a bunch of engineers here, but, yeah, we have not really looked at the cost.
So hypothetically, you decide to move, right? You have a third party in there, and they want to, the third party buys the property. Can they convert that into residential use by right? Mr. Norrisini?
That's, you're asking me for a conversion?
Well, I mean, by, I mean, by right. And so right now, so you're create, so you're building what will be a residential unit.
So I will defer to our solicitor for that.
You ask the question again? Not sure exactly what you're asking.
If a third party buys it?
Yes.
Assuming we approve, assuming this gets approved.
Assuming this gets approved. By right, right now, will that, can someone convert that into a multifamily use?
I don't believe so, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, I'm looking...
Your ordinance is well enough to know that from the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm looking at the code. I mean, they would have to comply with all, it would not be establishing any right to convert it. They would still have to comply with whatever code requirements there were if they could convert it. But just by constructing that building doesn't give them any additional right or ability to convert it to another use. Because remember, this would be granted by the zoning hearing board. It would not be a legal nonconforming use. So there's no rights to that from a nonconformity standpoint.
And generally speaking, you know, they're going to need variances to get this building built, and usually, a normal condition to that is you only can build it and use it as it was presented to the zoning hearing board.
And that...
So if they want to, if they want to come back, if they want to use that building for something else, they're going to have to come back to the zoning hearing board.
Is that something that we would, if we're recommending?
It's a traditional condition, but it certainly wouldn't harm that you add it to your recommendation if you so wish.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments from the Planning Commission? Any other comments from staff?
Just one question about access to the lot. If you're looking at the lot to the left here, there's a fence, I think, currently down the whole property line there. You mentioned that the back of the adjacent lot is currently just used for sort of overflow and parking. Is there any connection between this lot and the next-door lot? Or would it use a separate driveway?
Between the two lots that we currently own?
Yeah.
No, the fence line goes all the way back.
Okay.
And Lane, just, every Radnor Township zoning opinion grant does say, "In strict conformance with the plans and testimony presented before this board." And actually, we've been back a couple times because plans have changed, just even the square footage has changed, and we've had to go back to the zoning hearing board for that.
Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval by, when this application goes to the zoning hearing board, with two conditions. One, full compliance with the stormwater ordinance, and two, that the use be limited to the use that is being presented to the zoning hearing board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to check before we move forward. Are there any members of the public that wanted to speak on this? Okay. Just want to confirm. The next agenda item is consideration of Application 212752 concerning Eastern University's Learning Center and Gymnasium. The application seeks approval of final land development plans. Here, the applicant proposes to renovate the Eagle Learning Center and Gymnasium buildings while providing revisions to the internal road network and parking areas. As part of our consideration, we've received letters from Gannett Fleming dated June 26, 2025, and from Gilmore and Associates dated June 27, 2025. And I see we have the representative of the applicant.
You've seen this several times. It already received preliminary plan approval. It did receive two variances, as mentioned in the review letters, one from the parking requirement under the institutional district, and the other one from steep slopes, some minor steep slopes that were on the site, basically, that were man-made. We received preliminary plan approval. We've been, we submitted final plan. There was a lot of comments. We continued the hearing. We cleaned up the comments. As you can see, there's only a couple comments here. There is one waiver being requested, and that's from the 500-foot requirement. That seems to be pretty common. There is an aerial on the plans that kind of show the surrounding area. The Gannett Fleming letter mentions the 500-foot waiver. We are aware that we have the requirement, the rec fee requirement, so be the fee in lieu of. And also, we acknowledge a central water system designed with adequate capacity, and the township engineer and fire marshal will review it. As to the Gilmore letter, again, there was a couple minor comments that Rob can address if need be. And one other comment I would like to make is, this board recommended that when construction starts, that updates be given to the neighbors every two weeks, and Eastern will be doing that. That was confirmed today. Some of the other institutions in the township do that already. It seems to work well, so that people know what's coming.
So is it accurate to say that anything on the consultant's letter will be a will comply?
Yes.
Mr. Vines, I don't mean to go out of order, but there is one thing on the, on Damon Drummond's letter. Under general comments, as previously stated, provide appropriate guide rail and treatments for the proposed, basically, it's saying, "The current guide rail does not, is not in accordance with federal or penned-out standards." And I would like to see if Mr. Lambert could tell us about that.
I believe Damon was looking for the end treatment on it, and we've gone back and forth before we resubmitted, and so it's going to really just be changing that detail for the end treatment?
No, this includes the guide rail and end treatment.
Okay.
Neither were in compliance with federal or penned-out standards.
Well, we will comply.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Drummond.
Okay. So, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Drummond, anything further on this application?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Norrisini, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any commissioner comments or questions? Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Eastern University, 212752.
Okay. Second, second by Nat. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you. Have a good night, rest of summer.
Okay. The last agenda item is consideration of Application 214635 concerning 204 to 208 Stratford Avenue slash 18 Forest, also known as Stratford Walk. This application is for approval of preliminary subdivision and land development plans. Here, the applicant is proposing to construct 29 single-family homes on the southwest corner of Stratford Avenue in Eagle Road. As part of our consideration, we've received letters from Gannett Fleming and Gilmore and Associates, both dated June 27, 2025. The application is being filed in accordance with a settlement agreement approved by the Board of Commissioners on March 24, 2025, further approved by the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas on April 29, 2025. And do we have a representative for the applicant?
Yes, sir. Greg Lingo, I'm the owner of Rockwell Stratford LLC, who's the equitable owner of the property. We came onto this project after a prior developer had attempted to get approved 41 attached units. They were denied and then ultimately went to court and then submitted a different plan for 38 attached units, which also went to court. Around that time, end of last summer, we came onto the scene and proposed to the township and the owners of the property some kind of a global settlement where instead we would propose 29, initially it was 30, but we've dropped to 29, single-family homes. And in listening to the neighbors and some of the conflict, we agreed to exit the community onto Eagle Road, which would try to relieve some of the traffic off of Stratford. We agreed to not have extra driveways cut into Stratford Road, again, trying to alleviate that. We've worked extensively with the neighbors on buffering and stormwater management, types of plants that we'll plan along the Grant Lane neighbors along here, as well as fencing. So we've had some really good interactions. We've held about 15 neighbor meetings through the process, and we're kind of proud of the plan that we've now achieved where we are here. Oh, hand it off to Dave from Site Engineering.
Good evening, David Sanders, I'm the design engineer on the project. We've been working on this one for a while. We have the two review letters. I don't know if you would want to go through them item by item or what you like to do, but they were all will complies with us that we worked with. I talked to Damon earlier today, went through a lot of stuff with him, and I think we're in good shape. There's only a couple of comments left on the project, so.
Okay.
But this is for preliminary plan also.
Okay, so all of the items on the consultant letters are going to be will comply?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just stop. Mr. Phillips, did you have anything to add on this application?
I do not.
Okay. And Mr. Drummond, do you have anything to add? Are there any outstanding items that need to be discussed?
I, I think everything he has said was will comply. The one we'd like you to discuss real quick is just D2, just to verify that one can and will be a will comply with the driveway lengths.
Okay, D2, yes. I believe five of the driveways are not at 20 feet long. We are going to adjust the plans to make them 20 feet long to have, to meet the minimum driveway requirements and parking requirements that Damon asked for. So we will adjust the plans to fix that.
Okay.
It's a will comply.
Good. Mr. Drummond, that's all good?
That is good.
Okay. Mr. Northini, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm George Brosman, I'm the attorney representing the applicant. I worked on the settlement agreement and I, I worked on the prior plans. We did note in, and I think Damon mentioned it in his review letter, there was one point of discussion we would like to have. The settlement agreement requires that the flashing signal at Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue be removed, which we agreed to and we're fine with that. It's a blinking signal indicating a stop. There's also stop signs there. Mr. Lingo can talk about this further, but at some of the meetings that I attended, and he attended more than I did, some of the neighbors that lived on, it was the newer development on Stratford Avenue, I think it was the neighbor next to the flashing signal, actually said they preferred that signal to remain. They felt that it had a traffic calming or a traffic slowing effect. So we're, as the applicant, basically willing to either remove the signal or let it remain. And we just thought we should have a discussion of that, get the township staff's take on it and the planning commission's take on it. We will bring it up to the commissioners to see what they want to do. We'll follow the settlement agreement or we'll remove it if the commissioners approve that amendment to the settlement agreement. So we just thought we should have that discussion here as well.
Is that item addressed in the settlement agreement?
Yes, it says that the signal should be removed.
Should be removed.
We agreed to remove it and we will remove it, but we did hear afterwards that some of the neighbors liked it, so we're also willing to keep it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I can address that. That was my addition to the settlement agreement. So, uh, there's no concern with the crosswalks and ADA ramps, correct?
No concern, as long as the right-of-way exists.
Right, and we, we had noted that. So actually, there were two signals at one point in time. One was hit and re, and removed. We had met with PennDOT, but we'd never gone through. Anecdotally, the intersection does not need the flashing red signal. In essence, I guess we could actually put the other one back up. If, if that's, I mean, if that's what, I, I think we should talk to the neighbors. Basically, Mr. Brosman, I mean, I'm fine whichever way we go. If it's two or three neighbors versus a bunch, we, you know, but we're fine either way. If there, one's going to remain, then the same conversation has to be had with PennDOT is, does the other one have to be back, be installed? If that's the case, that changes the dynamic of that. So as opposed to removal, and this is just me talking, I would ask for the installation of the new as part of the, you know.
Yeah, and at that point, we'd probably just remove it.
Understood.
As per the agreement.
Okay. Is this something that can, this is preliminary approval?
Yes.
So is this something that can, can be continued to be thought about?
Absolutely. There's no, I, I see Mr. Brosman's point to bring this up, and I'm happy that him and Mr. Lingo have brought forth some concerns from our residents who live there, and that, that may be the end game, that we keep that one there. But they should not, this particular issue should not hold up the plan.
Okay. It also seems like it shouldn't, we would not even need to address it in our vote this evening, but allow you to continue to have discussions?
Correct. And maybe, I think now's the time to get PennDOT involved. If we can just leave the one and abandon it, great.
And that would be fine with us. We just thought we should mention it to the planning commission.
Sure.
As we'll be seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have people in the public who would like to speak on this application? No. Do we have any other commissioners' comments? Yes.
Just for clarification, uh, you have a, a road here that's entitled New Road that goes from Stratford to Eagle. Is that a two-way, two-way road, two direct, two-directional?
Yes, it's a two-way, 28-foot wide, meeting the township specs.
Okay. And then par, mostly parallel to that, but not completely, but mostly parallel to that in between about 14 of these units. That's also a road?
That's going to be more of an alley for the garages and accessing, that's going to be 15 feet wide.
It will not exit, there, there will be no exit on Eagle Road from there?
No, just onto the internal road.
So as far as dedication of the township, what's the intent of it?
Nothing's going to be.
Neither.
It's going to remain part of the association.
Neither of these will be dedicated to the township?
Correct.
Both New Road and the other road?
Correct.
Okay. And as far as sidewalks on Eagle Road?
We have sidewalks on Eagle Road and Stratford, along with the internal road itself.
Okay. And then they would, I assume, potentially connect to the potential sidewalks from St. Honor Ray, which were, I think, conditional?
Yeah, at our intersection with Stratford and Eagle, we're putting ADA walks and connecting across the road there, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
With the, are these additional parking spaces in the bend of the road?
In, in the center of the internal road, there are seven parking spots, including an ADA spot.
Okay.
And there is also 15 parallel spots along the New Road.
Okay. Are those connected with any, with specific houses?
They're just overflow guest parking.
Okay.
So there will be an HOA that'll be responsible for the maintenance of the, the road and?
Yes.
Has that agreement been drawn up?
I believe we submitted a draft with our application, as is required by the SALDO, but that would be finalized later in the process. And I don't know if Greg wants to speak about it further, what his intent is with that regard. But I know he has a certain niche he's going for with that.
It's intended that the HOA would take care of everything when you stepped out of the house, essentially. So yards, we will not be allowing pools and fences and that type of stuff. But stormwater management, the road, and landscaping would all be covered by this HOA.
Okay.
What about aesthetics?
Aesthetics, that was one of the things that was a real sticking point when we were entering the settlement agreement, that we agreed that none of these, no two homes would be the same, the same as another home in there. So they're, um, so we're building essentially a neo-traditional design project here. And in the settlement agreement, we showed some different types of elevations of the homes, and then they would all be different color schemes and that type of stuff, so we're.
And then thereafter, with the second buy, second-party buyers and the third-party buyers?
They'd have to get approval if they wanted to paint their garage a certain color and that kind of stuff, yes.
They will buy the HOA?
Correct.
Peter, just curious, at this stage, this is not, the, the agreement is not something you're looking at until later in the process?
The settlement agreement or?
No, the homeowners.
The HOA, yeah, we will look at it, but it, it's a very limited view of that agreement.
Okay.
We're just going to look at it to see if it conflicts with any of the rights, the power is, the, sorry, any rights that home, the township has retained. But other than that, it, that's generally viewed as a private matter between the developer and his or her customers.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other comments?
And the public has seen this plan and they met with all the neighbors and?
Extensively, yeah. We held no less than six neighbor meetings. And then we had approximately 25 individual meetings with different neighbors.
I'm sorry, so how many, how many homes will be in total?
29. New homes.
And what elementary school will this be served by?
I don't know, Mr. Knight.
Well. Wait.
It's not on our end of the review.
I, I mean, so I guess the question's going to be, is that, is this part of, are they aware of this? I mean, this is a fairly large, and this is not a question for you, Steve, but it's a question for, I guess, the body or for township. I mean, are they aware of, is, is the school board aware of this large project? Because this is like, this is something that could be fairly meaningful for.
Yeah, I'm not sure if.
Okay.
Yeah, we had, um, the owners of the property had the plans for 41 town, townhomes and then 38. So the township, you know, wanted there to be these single-family homes, so these are basically approved by the settlement agreement. So the school district really doesn't have input on, on it. And, you know, there are six homes there now, six dwelling units, so it is a net increase of 23, where, you know, 41 were originally proposed.
Okay. Okay. So with that, I am going to make a motion recommending approval of application 214635 concerning 204 to 208 Stratford Avenue slash 18 Forest for preliminary plan approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I do not believe we have any old or new business. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a public comment.
Oh, we do. Please come forward. Yes, please come forward.
Good evening.
Hi.
My comment, I'll give my name, but the topic, my comment is the comprehensive plan. And I'll give my name, is it on?
Damon, you need to talk into the microphone, please.
Right, okay. Jillian Norris Santo, Radnor resident, 424 Inverary Road, that's Villanova. I've been in Radnor over 40 years, Wayne and now Villanova. And my comment is on the Radnor Comprehensive Plan, specifically reporting on it. I would respect, respectfully like to suggest that the task force subcommittee of the planning commission, which is in charge of overseeing implementation of Radnor 2035, issue a progress report to the Radnor community every six months. And I realize there's a plan to have it all monitored annually with a report. However, I think there's so much in the plan and public interest, I think, could wane unless there's more frequent reporting. There are so many topics that a focus on one or two key areas per report, I think, every six months would be doable. And I think that would work. For example, topics such as nat, uh, natural resources, maintenance of special treatment for sensitive areas, open spaces, or conservation and enhancement of the Wayne Business District could be reported on, rather than trying to do 100% of the topics every time. I think this, I see this, this would be a report for the public posted on the township website. This would be separate or apart from any report to the Board of Commissioners that you may wish to make. As you know, many individuals and groups participated in the planning process. And you're well aware, I know, because it was lengthy and there was a lot of, a lot of public participation, various forms. They, I think that these, uh, the residents, the taxpayers, and the many community groups deserve detailed, regular reports on how implementation is moving forward. Or if there are any roadblocks. I mean, I don't have to tell you, but just to mention some of the groups. The Wayne Business Association, the Radnor Conservancy, the Radnor Environmental Council, Radnor Memorial Library, the League of Women Voters of Radnor Township. I'm past president of that organization, and there were many others. And the, these groups would be very happy to help publicize the briefer six-month progress reports, or even post them on their own websites if that was wished. And I think that a report every six months would be very well received, and it would serve to keep the public engaged, rather than letting it sort of drift away and so that a report, an annual report, I think, would not have the same impact as a progress report every six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We can consider, consider those comments as we move forward. But for this evening, I think we'll stop there. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this concludes the meeting. Our next meeting scheduled is August 4, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.